Good evening, we called to order the regular meeting of West Valley City Council. We note that we have a quorum present. Two of our council members are excused tonight, Councilman Karen Lay and Councilman Jake Pittsimoore. Let's see, then let's begin with our opening ceremony. We turn to Councilmember Tom.
Thank you Mayor, I appreciate it very much. I can have a comment, and after that I can invite Richard, can come up here and give a prayer for our meeting tonight. My family is here tonight. My dad is the Ute buyer, my mom is the Paula buyer, and Kennedy is Nick's daughter, is my brother, Nick Viall. And my wife, she's somewhere around this building. And Carl, two sons, Carl and Kent and Carolyn is my daughter. Here I want to share with you about this tonight, Richard and Paula, they have a big family. They have six children in their own, and my cousins were staying with them at that time. And Richard went to Philippine Refugee Camp, tried to adopt my sister and I at that time. I was over eighteen years old, and it didn't work out for me, so my sister came along with Richard to come to Houston, Oregon. And later, six months later, I came to Troy with them, and we were in a refugee camp for two years. She went to school, my sister, she went to school and she met a girl, and that girl had a problem with foster care families, and she came home to tell Richard and Paula, said, "Well, I have a friend and she has a problem with the foster care families," so Richard and Paula said, "Well, just bring her home." And later, Richard took care of legal paperwork for that girl. And shortly after that, my uncle became the same refugee camp, I was there before, with his two sons, and they came, and he left Houston, Oregon, to Texas, for Texas, and then two sons who stayed there with us. And later, his youngest son that came here from Vietnam. So they have six children in their own, and seven beating his kids. It's a big family, thirteen family, I mean thirteen children in that family. Richard, he was an attorney at that time, very young attorney, and he worked really hard. I was a guy, witness to see the Caucasian couple working so hard. He left a house very often, it's 7:00, 8:00 AM in the morning, and they came home at 9:00 PM or 10:00 PM, sometimes 11:00 PM at night. He was a young bishop, a local school board member, and he was trying to feed an army at home, thirteen of them, at home. And I bet he had enormous pressure, but he did perfectly fine. Paula, Paula, today, sometime we hear people saying is the soccer mom, but Paula, not only is soccer mom, she ran, she ran from place to place, but also she made us articulation better each day. She often took care of family home, family evening, because Richard was not there. Richard and Paula, as I said earlier, very, very hardworking people. They have faithfully been building up, or formed structure and strong foundation in their family. And you can tell, thirteen of us, every single one of us, did turn out to be a decent human being, and you can tell the family. At the time, people were concerned about language barriers, cultural differences, but the Viall family know, they didn't care much about that. They took us in and they taught us well. I personally, I personally believe this life is all about, is all about, we try to pass our good recipe to our next generation. And Richard and Paula, they have been doing very well, and they continue to do so. I am grateful, I'm grateful for being a part of their family. I'm grateful for my biological parents. My mom is a very brave woman, and my dad, he passed away when I was five, and the Viall family took me in and taught me well. I just want to know, I'm grateful to, for having the opportunities to associate with the good people around in my life. I have learned a lot from them. They're like people tonight, sitting here, and we try to do our best to serve our community. And I'm grateful to have this opportunity to be here and to be a part of this big city. I'm grateful for my small family, my wife and three kids, support me with my job here. And with that, I just want to invite Richard to come up here and give a prayer for our meeting tonight. Thank you.
Mayor Bigelow, members of the council. Naturally, I've got a great deal of pride standing here. And before I offer the prayer, there's the words of an Irish poet that has inspired me. I currently serve as the Deputy Secretary of State in Oregon, and I've served in the legislature there. And in terms of leadership, this poem has often caused me pause. "May you have the grace and wisdom to act kindly, learning to distinguish between what is personal and what is not. May you be hospitable to criticism. May you never put yourself at the center of things. May you act not from arrogance, but out of service. May you work on yourself, building up and refining the ways of your mind. May those who work for you know, you see and respect them. May you learn to cultivate the art of presence in order to engage with those who meet you. When someone fails or disappoints you, may the graciousness with which you engage be their stairway to renewal and refrain you. May you treasure the gifts of the mind through reading and creative thinking, so that you continue as a servant of the frontier, where the new will drive enrichment from the old, and you never become a functionary. May you know the wisdom of deep listening, the healing of wholesome words, the encouragement of the appreciative gaze, the decorum of held dignity, the springtime edge of the bleak question. May you have a mind that loves frontiers, so that you can evoke the bright fields that lie beyond the view of the regular eye. May you have good friends to mirror your blind spots. May leadership be for you a true adventure of growth." Now if I might, according to my faith tradition, I'd like to offer a brief prayer. Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for the service of the men who sit before us this evening, for the sacrifices made, and for the trust placed in them by this community. We're mindful of the beautiful building that we sit in this evening. Mindful of many throughout the world and indeed in our own community, often may not experience the plenty that is represented here, and we ask that we might be sensitive to every opportunity where we can lift and serve and help. Please bless these men, both in this meeting and throughout their experience with those who labor on behalf of the citizens of West Valley, that they will be inspired, preserved, and provided with a spirit of humility that will assist them in their work. We are grateful for so many things that cannot be expressed, but we pray that we will carry that gratitude in our hearts. And these things we say in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you, and I forgot to mention one more thing, is that he pondered to seek a higher office in the near future, and I wish him the best. And he retired right now, so I think a very smart guy and very business minded, and he can take care of that deal.
Thank you. I don't see any visiting officials, and I don't see any Boy Scouts or Cub Scouts, so we'll jump to our minutes. Motion on the minutes of August 13.
May I move for approval of the minutes of August 13?
Second. Seeing no further comments, all in favor approving the minutes of August 13, please say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, passes unanimously, the minutes are approved. Next, we have our comment period. We have a number of people who've signed up. I'll remind you that five minutes is the maximum per person, thirty minutes total. All comments shall be directed to the mayor. Should not expect any debate or question and answer, it's your time to express yourself, although members of the council and staff may respond afterwards, but not during your comments. With that then, oh yes, that's correct, we have several public hearings tonight. If you are here to speak to one of those three public hearings, the one on the property at forty-six twelve west, thirty-five hundred south, or the property of fifty-three forty west, thirty-five hundred south, or the zone text change of boarding homes, then we will have a separate public hearing on each of those. So, but all others are invited to express themselves at this point, as we'll go with two who have signed up. Let's see, Stephen Dean.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council people. I've lived in this city since nineteen eighty-seven, and we've seen a lot of changes, and the changes that we've been seeing the last couple of years have not been really good. We had people move in that were on welfare, food stamps, public assistance. They saw next door how much money the people were making by turning their basement into a grow facility. They doubled down. You wouldn't even recognize that that's the same family that moved in five years ago. And I'm here tonight because I just can't seem to get anywhere with them. You know, I just want to live in my house in peace. I don't want to hear their stereo, I don't want to hear their music inside my house. And I have case after case after case where the police have been called. I have a state-of-the-art surveillance system, I could prove my case, and they're just laughing at us. They're just laughing at the fines. I've got a CDR here of when he goes to jail, gets three Class B misdemeanors, goes to jail. The next day, he comes back, backs his car up against my house, rolls his window down, and gives me another concert. The fines that he's facing are not enough, and what I'm asking you guys to do is get a bigger stick. I mean, it's incredible, it's like this personal vendetta against me. I play by the rules, I work sixty-five hours a week, I drive a truck, I drive a commercial vehicle, I need to sleep in my house. I need to get my rest in my house. Every time he goes past my house, he turns that stereo on. I mean, I've got earplugs, I've got a sound machine, and he wakes me up time and time and time again. And it's a real problem, and we just can't seem to get anywhere. You know, I've tried every avenue there is. I could give you a case number, the first one is C-1126858, another one's nineteen I-013732, another one's nineteen I-015127, another one's nineteen I-013732, another one's I-19I-007468, and there's a couple more I left off. I mean, it's just, it's ridiculous. And you guys hold the key. Use a big enough stick and this problem will go away. I mean, you know, when I was disciplined, and I've done stupid things driving the truck, and one of my stupid things cost me seventeen hundred dollars. Do you think I would ever do that again? Not in a million years. And that's what needs to be done here, because our neighborhood is just, it's not good. Everybody's scared of him, he intimidates people, he don't intimidate me. Because I've lived there thirty-two years, and I'm sick and tired of seeing people like me that play by the rules, and this guy is flaunting the rules in my face, you know, "Hey, I don't have to do your thing, you know, he's making money hand over fist, I just want to sleep in my house." I've spent three thousand dollars on my bay window blocking that sound. And I just need you guys' help, because if the fines aren't enough, it's just a joke. And I'm going to give the court recorder the tape, this is where he goes to jail, you can see him being hauled off, he collapses in the middle of the road, the next day, he goes right back, backs his car up, and gives me a little concert. It's not working, guys. And anything you can do to help me, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, next, Aaron Haga.
No, I'm sorry, I'm on one of the developments.
Okay. Do you have a visa?
First of all, I want to thank you for last week for sticking up for the citizens and our right to speech, sorry, to speak out. Every citizen has a right to speak up and speak out. It was brought up that, that citizens come here and they think that things are going to be resolved. I'm pretty sure most citizens just want to be heard. I think they understand that things aren't going to get resolved in this chamber, but you do have the power, if four of you guys get together, to make policy changes and to fix things. And I think that's what the citizens want to, want to hear. Many citizens have come in and talked about code enforcement employees in particular, especially two of them. I'll just leave it at that. Not just me, most of mine have been in emails, so I think there was some confusion last week. As the code enforcement, like you know, I've been saying, if Mr. Morris was not the ALJ, maybe some of these people could come to him, and some of these code enforcement things might be able to be resolved. If he wasn't sitting in judgment on them, he might be able to do the job that the city is paying him to do. Some say that the code enforcement isn't that big of an issue. Well, that is why I started handing out that pamphlet, that social security pamphlet, is so that you guys would hear from citizens that it is a bigger issue than you think. I don't just hand it out at the code enforcement, serious. I hand it out all over town. I also have the director, I keep him in my car, because a lot of people ask me questions. I don't know how to resolve them, I can give them to directors and stuff, but I give them the references to contact you or to contact the departments on how to do it. I'm not just doing it at the code enforcement, I do it everywhere, I talk to a lot of people. A lot of people ask questions, I'm like, "I don't know at all." But here's the people that do or can get you the answers. That's why I started handing them out, just so people would come to you and let you know that there's more citizens out there that have issues. That brings up another thing, is I ask, when they, when they talk to me, "Why don't you go out and talk, why don't you speak up?" They're scared. They're afraid if they speak up, because it's on the record, that code enforcement's going to come after them. Or animal control, if it's an animal control issue. This has been said many times, whether that's true or not, that's, that is perception. Sometimes perception is reality. No citizen should ever feel this way. I suggest you guys get out and drive around the district. For the Clean and Beautiful Committee, I had forty-seven hundred down to thirty-one, fifty-six out to sixty-four, sixty-eight. I drove in that area, it took me eight hours to drive that area, and one day I drove every street that I could get into. There's some issues that need to be resolved, it doesn't look like PD or code enforcement have been out there in years. The citizens that I awarded, the ones that I found, some beautiful ones, said that they made contact with code enforcement, nobody's come out. I told them, "Keep making contact." Once again, they should be able to, okay, we're not getting, we're not getting it, we should be able to go to the person in charge. That's not happening. The other thing is, the hearing that I was thrown out, there's some interesting listening on the tapes. I would, you know, if you want to hear it, it would be one hour, fifty-four minutes, eighteen seconds, to one hour, fifty-six minutes and fifty-four seconds. Mr. Morris, code enforcement employees, court officials, and everything, had a conversation about me. Then one of the code enforcement employees, I won't name him, realized that, or made a comment about the recording system being on, all of a sudden it was shut off. Who knows what was said after that? If they weren't saying anything wrong, why did they have to shut off the recording system? It just goes to the character of the code enforcement employees and the department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike Markham.
Okay, Mike Markham, she knows. I sat through the study meeting, and we were talking about the new multi, the new apartment complex over by Costco. Once again, the apartments are one-for-one, one parking spot, one apartment. People had, just because we're by the bus station and the train station, they still have their cars, and they need to park them. We need to increase parking, we've got to deal with ICO over here. I don't know how many of you have gone over and been around the ICO apartment that is up now, and all the parking spots in the evenings are taken.
It's a good day.
You know, they're not using the parking spots. I drove past, or, one day between our meetings, I took a little hike around the apartments and Fairborn Station and everything, and I watched people parking in the hotel parking lot and walking over to their ICO apartments. We've got to be able, or you've got to be able to get a handle on this, on some of these parking issues, if we're going to keep allowing these massive developments to come in and occupy the city. We've got to have parking, if they're going to have over X amount of units in their, in their development, then they have to have X amount of parking, and I don't mean one-for-one. You know, this place over here, they want, you know, one-for-one, that's figured into the rant, but I don't remember hearing them saying how many total parking spots they have. They said they had some scattered out around, I don't know if they were counting that first row over at Costco, or what they were doing, but if that's what they're planning to do, maybe a big fence needs to be put out between the apartments and Costco to, or makes it really inconvenient to walk in. It doesn't matter if there's a bike lane, people still park on the bike lanes. We have a group of people that just thumb their nose as at us, as a city, in many, many ways. I think code enforcement, I wish we could get more bite in code enforcement. After sitting through the court and looking at some of these houses that make it all the way to court, and people sound, look surprised and sound surprised of what's going to happen to them, they're idiots to not, to think that they can sit in a neighborhood and trash a neighborhood. I'm working with Lane on one now, at, at three zero zero one west, forty-one hundred south. It's a, it's a zoned agriculture, when it was originally, the original loners was part of the Mackey family, even at an old age, he took care of it, maintained it, kept the trees down, the sucker trees, the weeds. Right now, behind my place, behind my vinyl fence, there's weeds three feet tall. There's restaurant equipment that you can see put back there out of sight, out of mind. We've already had one fire there over the twenty-fourth, where they set some bushes on fire. Thank God it didn't get into the weeds that's in the rest of the area, or we'd have had a real fire back there. We can't, we can't keep coddling people that don't care. And I really believe they don't care. We need to get out, these people need to be educated so they can't complain. You had a gentleman up here a couple of months ago, or maybe a month ago, talking about what a great tool this city has, but so many people don't know about the rules, the regulations, until you hit them. And, and you hit people in the pocketbook, and that's what makes them think. It's like the gentleman said here, you give a guy, girl on drugs, a three hundred dollar fine, that's nothing. You give him a two thousand dollar fine, he might start thinking about it. Condemn his house, he might start thinking about it. We need to quit coddling these people that are causing the problems. You know, it's like I've said, I don't want to live in just an average city, I want to live in an above-average city. And the only way we're going to get above average is if we start kicking butt, taking names. We've got to quit coddling people, you know? My son made a comment to me one time, that if he lived in West Valley, I would probably turn him in. He's damn right. I would turn my own son in, so. But I'll, I'll be back here on the outbuildings, thanks.
Thank you. Next is Bonnie Gomez.
I'm speaking on IM7C.
Okay. Margot Springer.
I just want to echo some of the previous comments that have been made regarding code enforcement and neighborhoods being not taken care of. There are a lot of people that obviously don't care about their own yards and the yards of those that, those of us that do care. And it's, it's, it's a little underwhelming, the response that we get from, from these property owners. And the case that you mentioned about the fire, the next day or two, they had all of their, what was left of the fire, and they put it out at the curb into the street, and it sat there and sat there, and it was reported to code enforcement, and it sat there, basically, until the next round of big pickup came around. So that was three, three and a half weeks, sitting out there. And it happens multiple times in multiple places in the neighborhood. Big pickup comes, next day or two, trash starts collecting on, we report it, it sits there until a big pickup comes again. This isn't working. Those of us that care about our neighborhoods are being forced to not care, or we have to move to get out of this situation. And it's just not right. I spent many hours when this city was coming into existence, handing out flyers, pushing for this to become a city. I pounded in some of the original stakes welcoming to West Valley City, the signs that went up, helping my grandfather do that. And the city is becoming not a place that's happy to live in. So that's all I have for now, thank you.
Thank you, any others for public comment? Seeing no others, we'll close the public comment period, public hearing there, which will come up in a minute, so Mr. Isaac, any comments?
No sir, thank you.
Any comments from the council? Then let's see, we go to a public hearing. We begin with application GPZ-3-2910, filed by Jesse Jensen. This is a general plan change from low-density residential to general commercial, and a zone change from R18, minimum lot size, eight pound per feet, to C2 to general commercial. Included with this, once we will discuss it, will be ordinance nineteen twenty- Included with this, once we will discuss it, will be ordinance nineteen twenty-three, and then ordinance nineteen twenty-four. First one, a general plan change, a change of zone, and then resolution nineteen ninety-eight, a development agreement. For the one acre of property, this is located at forty-six twelve west, thirty-five hundred south. Get that up here. And try to remember this from last week. Oh, yes, I see where it is. This particular parcel is right next to our city park, right on thirty-five hundred south. And so, the proposal here is to, I think, generally speaking, make that into, wasn't dental? Dermatologist. And so, medical offices, and that seems to be a reasonable thing. I don't know. That's the proposal, to make these changes so that they can do that and build that there. It is right next to some residential properties that there's an entrance off of thirty-five hundred south back into the neighborhood there. So, that is the proposal before us. Any further comments? Council wants to add before we open up the public comment period. Just introduce it. Anything I missed that's critical? Okay, then we will open the public comment period on this issue. Is there anyone here who has come to speak to this issue? Seeing no indication of anyone wanting to speak to this, I'll close the public hearing portion, and we'll come back to the council for any comments, or motions, or discussion.
I move for approval of ordinance nineteen twenty-three.
Second. Properly before us. I can have stereo here. Any further comments? Seeing no further comments, we'll turn to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Northfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next, we have ordinance nineteen twenty-four to the council.
Twenty-three was to amend the general plan, to change the, twenty-four is to amend the zoning map, same parcel, same property. I move for approval of ordinance nineteen twenty-four.
Second.
Properly before us, any further discussion? Now, if some of you think we might be moving a little bit fast, I just remind you that we had a hearing on this last week. And had a discussion on it, so we had a chance to ask all our questions, so this is the second time in the official line that we now take action on it, so. With that, then, we have the motion, and the second, so, to our city recorder.
Councilman Northfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
And next is resolution nineteen ninety-eight for the development agreement.
Right, and I move for approval of resolution nineteen ninety-eight.
Second.
Properly before us, any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Northfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Next, we have application Z-one twenty-nineteen. This is filed by Stone Brook Construction Development, change from agricultural to R-17 for property at fifty-three forty west, thirty-five hundred south, just over a one-acre parcel. Okay, get that up, and see if this is the one, I think it is. Yeah, I believe this is going to be converted into four lots with two flag lots off of thirty-five hundred south. And so, we'll consider again a couple of items here, the change, the zone change, and as well as the development agreement. But this property was, there's one existing house that will stay on one lot. The other lots will be divided off from that. And so, anything else there? I believe that's everything. I can't get my finger to work on my computer. Just give me half a second. All of the lots, our eight thousand square feet are larger, and the two along thirty-five hundred south are shy of the eighty-foot minimum width required for a lot, but it was recommended that they move forward with that. This is the issue before us, so to, let's see, I need to now open the public comment period. Is there anyone here to speak to this issue? Okay. Come forward and state your name and address.
Aaron Haga, sixty-three seventy-five South Highland Drive. I'm the developer. I don't know if that was the appropriate time, but I just want to know if anybody has any questions regarding what we're going to do.
Couple of questions, anyone have any? I know I'm not a, I wish their way could be developed differently. I don't like flag lots, although they are allowed under our code.
Right.
This is personal preference.
Well, and that's one of the things that was brought up in the meeting before, I think by Steve, that the actual design that you see for the lot placement is not necessarily how it will be. So they most likely won't be flag lots. They'll probably be a hammerhead or a circle, some type of thing like that that will end up. It won't be flag lots like that. And so, we thought it would be best also with the homes, as you got residential to the east and also to the north of it, surrounding it. I thought it would, and the lot itself, one of the other things that were brought up about why not having a commercial right on Thirty-Fifth South, the lot itself is very deep. And so, if it was commercial, you would have a commercial development that would be in the backyards of about five different, or four or five different neighbors to the east. And then, so that's one of the reasons why to convert to residential homes. And that's it.
Anyone else to speak to this? Seeing no one else speaking to it, we'll close the public hearing portion, we'll come back to the council.
And I would note, Mayor, as Mr. Haga said, we're not approving the plan, we're just approving the, are looking at approving a zone change, that there could be smaller residential lots there. I do think it's appropriate for residential that far west on thirty-five hundred south. I drove down there the other day, it's almost all residential there. So I thought I'd throw those two cents in.
That was my only chance to get to say something. Trying to not speak too much this time, just a little bit. Anything else?
I move for approval of ordinance nineteen twenty-five.
Second. Yeah, this is the one changing zones from agricultural to R-17. And that's properly before us. Any further comments? Seeing no further comments, we turn to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Northfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye, I guess so.
Motion passes unanimously.
And next on this, we have the development agreement, resolution nineteen ninety-nine to the council.
I move for approval of resolution nineteen ninety-nine.
Second. Seeing no further comments or city recorder for, oh, this is just to enter into the development agreement. There's no agreement yet, so we're just letting Stan follow up. Okay.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Northfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, next, we go to a public hearing for application ZT-eight twenty-nineteen. This is filed by our city to change our code with some definitions for boarding homes and add some regulations for boarding homes and dwelling units. One of the issues our city was facing was that many people remodel, and they're taking a residential home and trying to turn it into a boarding house, which creates some problems, and not the least of which are certainly parking, certainly issues regarding safety. And so, we felt the need to set some standards. And so, there were situations where they were putting in bathrooms with multiple stalls, really turning it into almost an apartment building, but certainly a boarding home. And so, this would help us define that, clarify it, and so, if they head in that direction, we've defined what a boarding home is, and I don't recall now all the details on that, and maybe some of the council can help you with that. But I know there was a limit on the amount of bedrooms. There was a requirement that you could not make someone go through another room from your bedroom in order to get to the common living space, like the front room, the living room, the kitchen, et cetera. And so, those are a couple of, I can't think of other examples I don't have, if you'd like to chime in, if you're on my. If not, I'll open the hearing. Remember any others?
We did allow boarding homes in some areas in our city, but very restricted.
Right, with requirements for extra parking and different things like that. So we're not outlawing or attempting to outlaw boarding homes. We're attempting to prevent people from turning their single-family home into a boarding home by the requirements of, as you mentioned, bedrooms, bathrooms, so forth on the inside of the home. But still, if someone wanted to create a boarding home, it could be available, they just have to follow the law. And these requirements, if any of you take the time to look at them, these are not unreasonable. They're very normal, people normally would expect to have a situation if they are in there. We have discovered some places where people have done this anyway. You have people that end up living in bedrooms that are safety hazards, that do not have proper fire exits, that, you know, just don't work and don't need the things that ought to be, that people need to expect by living in a city. So, thank you for adding those additional comments. With that, then, we'll also, we'll actually be considering ordinance nineteen twenty-six. So what we will do is we'll open then the public hearing on that. Is there anyone here to speak to this issue? Looks like we have a couple of people.
Hello, my name is Bonnie Gomez, forty-two forty Midway Drive. All right. Hello, council members. I stand before you to discuss item seven C, application ZT-eight-two-zero-one-nine. After reading the sit-ups and understanding the staff's claims of allowing or ignoring uses like duplexes and boarding homes in areas known for single-unit dwellings can lead to lower home ownership rates, tax row networks, utilities, and onsite parking and fire hazards, this claim is very misleading. According to the Census Bureau, between July first, twenty sixteen, and July first, twenty seventeen, Utah was the fastest-growing state in terms of housing units, with an increase of two-point-one percent, and was considered having the third-largest percentage increases in population, with a growth of one-point-nine percent. Since the two thousand and seven recession, there has been shifts in home-buying trends, with more millennials, Gen Xers, and even baby boomers not wanting the responsibility of maintaining a home, and are becoming more attracted to renting over purchasing homes. According to a Pew Research study analyzing U.S. Census Bureau statistics, the total number of household, of U.S. household, increased between two thousand and six and two thousand and sixteen by seven-point-six million. And while the number of homeowners remained flat, the number of renters increased. Nearly thirty-seven percent of current households are renters, which is the highest percentage since nineteen sixty-five. According to the Pew research, seventy-four percent of millennials are renters, which are one of the largest renting demographics. Most millennials view homeownership as a risk they would prefer to avoid. Many have amassed cycling levels of student loan debt and have come of age during the two thousand and seven credit crisis, and are more cautious about investments. As the U.S. population has grown and more prices have increased, renting is the only option for many young people. According to the Census Bureau, fifty years ago, in nineteen sixty-eight, living with an unmarried partner was rare. Only point-one percent of eighteen-to-twenty-four-year-olds and point-two percent of twenty-five-to-thirty-five-year-olds lived with an unmarried partner, according to the Current Population Survey. In twenty eighteen, fifteen percent of young adults aged between twenty-five and thirty-four lived with an unmarried partner, up from twelve percent ten years ago. Today, thirty percent of young adults ages eighteen through thirty-four are married, but forty years ago, in nineteen seventy-eight, fifty-nine percent of young adults were married. Among those ages eighteen through twenty-four, cohabitation is now more prevalent than living with spouses. Nine percent live with an unmarried partner in twenty eighteen, compared to seven percent who live with a spouse. Among young adults ages twenty-five to thirty-four, the age range at which it's more common to get married and earn at least forty thousand a year is at forty-three percent, compared to thirty-four percent of unmarried individuals. Nearly thirty-seven percent of American household rent, but the supply of renting housing has not kept pace with the demand, according to the recent Harvard study. In attempts to close the gap, there were approximately one-point-two, one-point-two-five million, one-point-twenty-five million units completed in two thousand and eight. However, construction focuses almost exclusively on Class A apartment buildings. Class A typically equates to high rents due to construction, land, labor, and other factors to make these properties financially feasible. Class A comes with a steep price tag and long construction timelines. Thus, despite an increase in construction over the past decade, the share of rental units under the age of ten has plummeted to an all-time low. The number now sits at nine percent, down from twenty-four percent in nineteen eighty. According to the census information compiled by Apartment List, the share of rental units aged thirty-plus years has risen from forty-one percent to sixty-six over the same timeframe. Currently, single family and two-to-four-unit residences comprise more than fifty-three percent of U.S. rentals, representing about twenty-three million units. Additionally, an estimated thirteen million new rental households are expected to be, expected to form by twenty thirty. Housing stock isn't projected to keep up with this demand, meaning there's an abundance of opportunity, opportunity to renovate and innovate older buildings, providing an important source of affordability and accessibility to meet heavy demand. These structures appeal to those residents- These structures appeal to those residents who earn too much income to qualify for subsidized affordable housing accommodations, but not nearly enough to satisfy the necessary income thresholds to purchase a home or rent a luxury apartment just described. According to an article published on July ninth, twenty nineteen, titled "The Housing Dilemma: Why Homeownership is Struggling to Recover in America," which is written by Adena Hipitz, a Forbes Council member, according to her, "The peak of the most recent financial crisis was March two thousand and nine. We're now over a decade out, and while the economy has largely recovered, housing has not." Mrs. Hipitz explains that the two main contributing factors are affordability and accessibility. New build home prices increased from a recession low of two thousand and five, or two hundred and five thousand to three hundred and five thousand today. Given the cost of labor, materials, and regularity, it is nearly impossible to profitably build a home for less than approximately two hundred and eighty thousand. So consumers turn to buying used or existing homes, which drives up demand and price for the subset of affordable homes. As a result, existing home sale prices increased from a recession low of a hundred and fifty thousand up to two hundred, two hundred and thirty thousand today. The takeaway is, we're, we are supply constrained on affordable homes. Her second point is accessibility, where she states, "Since two thousand and nine, government-sponsored enterprises have tightened mortgages, mortgage underwriting standards for seemingly good and obvious reasons." As we all know, there are three main factors for getting a mortgage. Your FICO score, debt-to-income ratio, and down payment. If you want, if you want to get a mortgage, you can't get, you can't, you can't be bottom of the barrel on the three of these. You can't have a low FICO score, high debt-to-income ratio, and low down payment. Therefore, if you have a low, a lower-than-average FICO score, you generally need to put more money down to get a mortgage. A twenty percent down payment on a new build at three hundred and forty thousand is sixty-eight thousand. The median bank account in the U.S. has four thousand five hundred in total savings. Across any financial asset, this increases to twenty-three thousand five hundred, but varies significantly with age. This is why the down payment is a main issue holding many renters back from becoming homeowners. Therefore, the housing dilemma is currently at a stalemate, supply and demand dynamics are not poised to change, and thus, the affordability issue will persist. The housing market is bruised, and average American is locked out of accessing to homeownership. So as loan, loan requirements are stiffened, it has become harder for younger generations and individuals with low credit and high debt to secure mortgages. Steep, steep down payment requirements may find even more difficult. According to a two thousand and eighteen Urban Institute report, the millennial homeownership rate is roughly eight percent, lower than previous generations. To put it in another way, a large percentage of renters across the U.S. are in rentals, whether it's a duplex, boarding homes, or single-family rentals. This folk, this focus on meeting growing demand by delivering accessibility and affordability helps individuals and families live the American dream regardless of where they fall on the, on the price point spectrum. I myself, as a millennial, was a victim of this housing dilemma. I could not qualify for apartment and made too much money to qualify for affordable housing program. This resulted in me renting from a private landlord, whose home had similar remodels, which helped catapult me into a first-time homeowner. Not only have I experienced this firsthand, but have seen many friends and colleagues need and take the same stepping stones, stepping stones as I did. If it wasn't for the rental, I would not be standing before you as a resident of West Valley City. Therefore, to claim these remodels are affecting homeownership rates is false, since it's currently being affected by accessibility, affordability, and most of all, most of all, the current population demographic of baby boomers, Gen Xers, millennials, who are, who are flat-out not interested in homeownership, hesitant to homeownership concept, and most of all, underqualified for homeownership. In fact, allowing these remodels brings in tax-paying civilians, which bolsters local businesses and the West Valley community. So by denying this change, you would be allowing fresh thinking, creative financing approaches, and providing a resourceful good service to the community of West Valley.
Thank you. Next.
When I bought my house, and I still have the paperwork, it states it's a single-family dwelling in a single-family neighborhood. Can we, can, I have two tough sheds in my backyard. Can I start renting those out? There's no facilities, there's no power. They'd have to share a room with my two lawn mowers, my tiller, my mulcher. We could maybe squeeze somebody in. I don't know. If there's some neighborhoods where the neighborhoods were not classified as single-family dwellings, then we could turn them into dormitories. In fact, we had one for a while right up on twenty-seven hundred, just north of forty-one hundred that was a dormitory for a while. Don't know how that happened. There's another one up just above forty-seven hundred, next to the Holiday Gas Station that's up there, that is in Taverville. But I bought my house because it was a single-family dwelling, and I didn't have to worry about not being able to use the roadways, the sidewalks. My daughters and my wife used to like to get out and walk, but the way some of the houses had gone is all it was, was cat calls. So they quit walking the neighborhood. I hope you guys can put a limit on this, put a top on it. If the house was built with two bathrooms and two toilets, it stays at two bathrooms and two toilets. It doesn't go to six bedrooms and, and a roll of to, and a row of toilets. You know, personally, I had to deal with that in the old army barracks in North Carolina, where you could sit down, you could talk to your buddy about what was going on. It's not pleasant. Got one big shower you could go into, don't drop the soap. Okay? We need to keep this city nice. We can't, we can't keep squeezing people in. So I'd appreciate anything you guys can decide to do to, to eliminate this, this possibility. And if somebody's caught doing it, the fines are huge. I don't mean a fifty-dollar fine. The fine is in the thousands. So it would take them a long time to get their money back. I feel bad for the people that don't have houses. I have three kids that are millennials, they all three have houses. In both cases, two of the cases, it takes my daughter and their husband to work to make the house payments. I don't know, I just, I don't, I can't see this coming down to where the people that bought our houses, for single-family dwellings, and you can't use the roads. You know, what's the sewage? What's, what's, it was brought up one time, these, all of our infrastructure is built for single-family homes. You know, where are we going to have the sewers all backing up? And where's the water going to come from? You know, you got a, I think maybe a one-inch line, water line going into your house, and you flushing four and five toilets at the same time while a couple of people are in taking a shower? We need to get realistic about some of this stuff. And if we start allowing it, they need to have a building permit, and they need to be brought up to code. They can't just go in and run extension cords every place. So whatever you guys decide to do, you know, you get to do it, but I hope you look out for the citizens and the people that care. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak to this issue?
Once again, like Mike said, I bought my home, single-family dwelling. Mike talked about it a little bit, I wanted to bring it up, and you guys brought it up in the study meetings when this subject was brought up, is the burden that it puts on the interstructure, the sewers, the water. When your puddings, when these houses, these subdivisions were built, they were built two-bedroom, or four bedrooms, two bathrooms, you know, they weren't meant to have six toilets in them, three, four showers in them. That's not what the areas were built for. I have sympathy for the young lady and the millennials out there. I bought my first house when I was in my twenties. My grandmother taught me, own property is important. You'll never lose on owning your house, owning a house, having your property. I am one hundred percent for what you guys are going to vote on, that there needs to be structured, that things, that there has to be rules and regulations, and I agree with Mike one hundred percent, the ones who violate it, that go around because it's going to happen, and when it's found out, they need to be hit hard.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no further comments, we'll close the public hearing. We'll bring it back to the council to consider ordinance nineteen dash twenty-six.
May I like to make a couple of comments? First of all, for all of the reasons stated here and probably others, and for me, really, not just the string on the infrastructure, the parking, the neighborhood, but also mostly the safety, when you start subdividing your house so that there's not appropriate egress and ingress, and the firefighters can't get in there and do what they need to do or remove something on the structure. But I appreciate Ms. Gomez and all of the data that she provided us. However, to me, much of it was off the mark. Certainly, there is a need for more affordable housing. This is not addressed by this ordinance change. It's not, I mean, it's just off the mark. This ordinance does not prohibit cohabiting, does not prohibit multiple people buying a home together, does not prohibit people renting homes. It does not even prevent boarding homes, it just regulates them. Boarding homes will not be in single-family homes and single-family neighborhoods. They can only be, they're conditional use in certain zones where there would be ample infrastructure, parking. They have to be built according to codes so that they're safe and they're livable. And that's what we really are looking for, is that people, residents in West Valley City be safe, and they have livable, livable accommodations, and that they are not crowding out their neighbors. And that's my two cents on that issue.
I think I would add a couple of comments. Perhaps not everyone is aware, West Valley City is actually one of the leaders in affordable housing by comparisons here in the valley. This has traditionally been an area where people could buy more home or rent a larger apartment for a price that was affordable. As well, we have a large number of rental units available in our city, and I'm not just talking about apartments. And do, there are, there are duplexes, but there are many homes, single-family homes, that are available to rent in West Valley City. So we really have become a place where those who need to be able to find something reasonable or more reasonable than most places come to West Valley City. But I agree, as we look at these issues, there are basically three that I think kind of drive us. One is safety, another is health, based upon what problems could arise from the way homes are designed, and there's also quality of life. One could say, build anything, anything goes. And certainly, that would impact safety if there weren't laws regarding electrical outlets, wiring, plumbing, et cetera. But even more so, the quality of life is determined by what people do and what they build and how they take care of their neighbors. Single-family homes, people who own those, invest more in their community. It's just a fact of life. People who rent are traditionally more transient, don't invest in the community. So a community that has a large number of renters oftentimes suffers quality of life because people do not invest in their community. We may not have it exactly right, but we felt that this was a good start to address some of these issues that we have discovered. We could show examples of those in some of the materials that attach to our agenda, highlighted some of the problems that we have discovered, that people just can't live like that. Well, they shouldn't have to, but they do because people take shortcuts with safety and with health. And we want to protect our citizens. And we may not do it perfectly, but we think that this is an appropriate step for doing that. Anyway, I made those comments. I shouldn't have talked, I talked too much last time, so, so I'll be quiet. But we don't have a motion before us. Move to approve ordinance nineteen dash twenty-six. Second. Properly before us, any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the roll call.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfield?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Next, we have ordinance nineteen dash twenty-seven, to amend our code to add forty-seven hundred south and thirty-six hundred west as high-volume roadways. High-volume roadways have been identified where accidents involving pedestrians are significantly high. And one of the reasons for that is where individuals enter into the roadway to conduct business, and so we have identified areas where that is prohibited. Many of you have seen individuals who seek to solicit donations or whatever, stepping out into the roadway, and people stopping in the roadway, and it, and it, and a roadway's not really designed as a place for doing that. There are ways that they can do that without going into the roadway, and so we've added these based upon statistical analysis of the propensity for accidents. And so that's simply what it does. With that, to the council.
I approve of approval of ordinance nineteen dash twenty-seven.
Any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder.
Councilman Norfield?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Next, we have Resolution nineteen dash one hundred. This is an agreement between West Valley City and the Department of Environmental Quality for the receipt of certain grant funding. The state occasionally has funding available. This particular funding is tied in with the Volkswagen settlement nationally, a very hefty settlement against that automobile company. We have worked on some type-two electrical vehicle charging stations, two here at City Hall and two at Family Fitness Center, and have requested funds, but in order to do that, we have to do this agreement, and it's for a hundred and forty thousand, five hundred sixty-four dollars. That is the issue before us. To the council.
Move for approval of Resolution nineteen dash one hundred.
Second. Properly before us, any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfield?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we go to Resolution nineteen dash one oh one, one hundred and one. This again is an agreement between our city and the Utah Department of Transportation for the design and construction of twenty-five fifty south between fifty-six hundred west and seventy-two hundred west. This is a project we've been working on for an extended period of time. The amount of funds here is five hundred thousand dollars. The amount of funds here is $500,000. That you will go from UDOT to West Valley City in order to design this portion of that roadway. The plans for this roadway continue from there as well. There's still parts of it under construction. This is for the design of that, to hopefully over the next couple of years, we'll get that all taken care of as that area of the city builds up and the need for additional roadways becomes ever more critical. So that's the introduction to it. The council.
I move for approval, resolution 19-101.
Second. Properly before us, any further comments? To our city recorder.
Councilman Norfeld.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next, we have, we called it our consent agenda, but it's just the one item, resolution 19-102, to accept a special warranty deed from the Catholic Diocese of Salt Lake City Real Estate Corporation for property of approximately 3,580 West, 3,650 South. And this is some work, I know this particular church is extending their parking lot and we're making some changes there. This will cover those changes, working with them, as I recall. These are fairly routine, we usually do quite a few of them. It's two and a half feet of right-of-way on Lancer Way in order to do that parking lot expansion. And so this is what this relates to. Fairly routine. To the council. Move for approval of resolution 19-102. Second. Properly before us, seeing no further comments, to our city recorder.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Now, under new business, we have five resolutions. They are all related to each other, and we will vote on them individually. But this is related to our city center development that is occurring here. There is an office building being built, we have been working with that. There's a parking structure that is being built. Those are well under construction, should be finished, I think the parking structure later this year. I think the office building is into the spring. Don't know exactly, but as a part of that, working with the developer there, as they were moving from their construction phase into their financing, they discovered some minor changes that if we, with the agreements with the city were made, that it would facilitate their being able to finance or obtain the financing that they would like. These are such things as our agreement on the parking structure, and I believe that that was C. 19-105, that we built with the intent of parking being available for the office building. This would just formalize that a little bit, that that is in fact the case. And so, let's see, I think 103 is an agreement for disposition of land for private development. 104 is the assignment of the agreement for that disposition. These are involving, in fact, there'll be some more items on two short meetings we will hold right after this, from our redevelopment agency and municipal building authority. These seem like a lot of work, and they are, but they are not major in impact on the city. The city has not given anything else away. We've not made any agreements that have lessened the city's interest in any way. And so 105 is for the parking structure, 106 is for the right-of-way on the street, that that will be available and the city won't change that. 107 is to approve agreements for third-party approvals. I guess we could get our attorney or our staff up here to explain these in detail. We discussed them in our study meeting earlier tonight. This is actually an exception to our normal mode of business. Usually, we study it one week, vote on it the following meeting that we hold. In this case, so we're actually doing both tonight, although we had some pretty good discussion on this in our study meeting earlier tonight. So with that introduction, is there anything else anyone wants to add to those? Anything, anything critical that we ought to mention? Our resident city council staff member.
I think yet again, job pointing out that this doesn't change our agreement, it helps the owner of the office building obtain financing by us promising that they can park cars at the parking structure we built for them to park cars in. We maintain ownership of the parking structure.
And use the street.
Aye.
Okay, well, with that then.
You know, sometimes banks are funny about financing. I've had experiences with them myself, and they need a lot of assurance before they mention.
And of course, some of the concerns they had once the city, they looked closely at what the city had done, they had a higher comfort level as well. So we didn't have to change everything, there were just a few things. With that then, I'm ready for... Move for approval of resolution 19-103. Second. Properly before us, seeing no further comments, to our city recorder.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Now, we go to resolution 19-104. Move for approval. Second. Properly before us, any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder.
Councilman Norfeld.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Now, resolution 19-105, parking.
Move for approval.
Second. Seeing no further comments, to our city recorder.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next is resolution 19-106, the right-of-way on Market Street. Move for approval of resolution 19-106. Second. Seeing no further comments, to our city recorder.
Councilman Norfeld.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next, we go to resolution 19-107, the city to approve agreement for third-party approvals. This is related to the redevelopment agency and municipal building authority as well. We'll hear a little bit more of that when we hold those meetings. Move for approval of resolution 19-107.
Seven.
Seeing no further comments, to our city recorder.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
That concludes our regular council meeting agenda, and I'll take a motion to adjourn in just a moment, but we do have two meetings that tie into this same discussion on the parking structure, the office building, and so forth, with those two brief meetings. With that then... Move adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passage unanimously, we're adjourned. Call and order the special redevelopment agency meeting. Note, we've had an opening ceremony and that five members of the agency are here, the other two being excused. And move to item number four, the approval of July 23 minutes.
I move for approval of the July 23 minutes.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, they are approved. Resolution 19-10. Again, this is resolution to enter into an amendment on the agreement for disposition of land for private development. Mr. Isaac, would you like to explain that any further?
Well, that's very, you, very well done. The mayor did a very good job too, but it does, is this an amendment to allow the final construction financing of the new office?
Okay. To the agency. Mr. Chairman, move for approval of resolution 19-10. Second. It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Kaman, would you please take the roll call?
Mr. Bueller.
Aye.
Mr. Hune.
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow.
Aye.
Mr. Norfeld.
Yes.
And Vice Chairman Christensen.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, next one is resolution 19-11. Again, that's now assigning the agreement to disposition of land for private development. Any discussion needed, explanation? I will accept a resolution, or a motion.
Move for approval, resolution 19-11.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Kaman.
Mr. Norfeld.
Yes.
Mr. Bigelow.
Aye.
Mr. Hune.
Aye.
Mr. Bueller.
Aye.
And Vice Chairman Christensen.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Now, resolution 19-12. This one is a little bit different. We're renewing with this one, an agreement that we had with the University of Utah to support and partner with the Opportunity Scholars Program for the benefit of West Valley City students in a program to promote secondary education. This is a program that we've done for two years now, encouraging higher education, not just secondary education, but higher education, college-level education, with many of the scholars that would not be able to afford it if they had to go out and get loans and find housing. We actually, it comes under redevelopment because in one of our redevelopment areas in the city center, we actually rent some of the units there for housing for these students. So this is a resolution to authorize this for one more year. I don't, to the agency.
I move for approval of resolution 19-12.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Ms. Connell? Or Ms. Kaman?
Mr. Bueller.
Aye.
Mr. Hune.
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow.
Aye.
Mr. Norfeld.
Yes.
And Vice Chairman Christensen.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
And one final motion for redevelopment.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
A call to the order, the West Valley City Municipal Building Authority, opening ceremony we had early in our regular meeting, roll call, we have a forum here and we have Councilman Friti Simanu and also Councilwoman Ken Lance, not here tonight. And we have, I don't know, the four is approval of minutes, so we'll turn over to the council.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval of the June 4th, 2019 matters.
We have a motion, we need a second. Okay, we have a motion and second. Any favors in with this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, this is a motion that passes unanimously. We'll have a resolution, resolution is the 19-06. I will turn over to Assistant Manager Paul Isaiah.
Thank you, sir. This again is now acting as the municipal building authority. The lender in this process is trying to secure the final construction financing for the office tower and has requested that the city and the municipal building authority consent to that assignment of certain rights under the parking structure management agreement as well as the Skybridge license agreement for the protection of the office tower parking. So what we for you is, is just to approve that consent, which the council did in the previous meeting.
Thank you. We'll turn over to council, have a motion, action, discussion.
Move to approve resolution 19-06. Noting that this is the one we've been waiting for, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. We'll turn over to recorder, Nicole.
Mr. Norfeld.
Yes.
Mr. Christensen.
Yes.
Mr. Bigelow.
Aye.
Mr. Bueller.
Aye.
And Chairman Hune.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And we have one more motion.
Move adjourn.
Thank you. All, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.